Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
We're going to go ahead and get started with our work session today. First item that we have on the agenda is a review and discussion of our legislative priorities. So I'm going to look to my right, Ms. Doyle and Dr. Gabriel, and I'm sure with the support from Dr. Birdsong, if you all would like to walk us through where we are and where you'd like to take us today.
So this afternoon, we have with us both Mark Flynn and Ron Jordan from Adanas Strategies. If you'd like to come up to the podium to be part of our conversation, let's do that. And what we wanted to do today, and what you have at your desk, is the red line version of the legislative priorities. In addition, you have a single sheet, which include the one priority related to the public school construction and renovation costs, funding that the city is going to include in their legislative packet, at least it was in their draft. I don't know if they've technically finalized it. And we had a brief conversation about that yesterday. So if we could, let's walk through the red line version of the legislative priorities, so we can discuss why things are in or out, and Adanas can help us discuss with us. The outcome of today is that we would vote on these, amended as they would be, but then we would present to our legislators next Wednesday at our breakfast at the Norfolk Technical Center at 8:30, or 8 o'clock, I believe, maybe 8 to 9:30. And so today, basically, we're going to discuss, vote, and be prepared for next Wednesday. Any questions before we proceed? Okay. Mark and Ron, do you just want to walk us through the red line and talk us through the changes that we made, why we did, and then discuss, for instance, Ms. Bassin had some other interests, but some are more federally oriented than they are state, and so we just need to point out why they would not be included in these priorities.
Thank you. The first item is one that you had in your package last year. It's to provide more flexibility in how you meet the pre-K needs for at-risk children, essentially by giving you the division more flexibility in the number of classes can be filled using locally developed criteria rather than state-developed criteria. It gives you, you can tweak it that way to sort of, you can meet your unique needs of the kids who you want to attract to the program. Also, the second part of that is to increase the wait for the free lunch in the way the distribution formula is calculated, is increasing the wait for free lunch eligibles in that, which would drive more money to the cities with high poverty rates like Norfolk.
I don't believe any of us had any concerns about this one. Any questions on this today? Okay, let's move on.
The next item deals with the biennial SOQ rebenchmarking. Every two years, as you know, the state board, the DOE recalculates the average statewide prevailing costs that are used in the formula. The state board, last week, unveiled the new rebenchmarking numbers for the upcoming biennium. It's roughly between $250, $260 million a year. And this request simply asks that the General Assembly not mess with those numbers, that the governor not mess with those numbers. Back in the day, before 2009, you may remember that those rebenching numbers would come in at three-quarters of a billion dollars. Well, and when the General Assembly in the 2009 session capped the cost of support, reimbursement for support positions, it cut almost three-quarters of a billion out of the budget. So you're seeing much smaller growth in the rebenchmarking numbers than you used to. But over the years, they have, when those numbers have come in high and they needed money, they played with the calculation on that. So this is a request, don't mess with the numbers, do it straight up, and fund it.
Again, I don't think we had any issues with this, pretty straightforward. Okay.
The next item is kind of a change in one that you, to one we've had in previous years. In previous years, we had legislative requests dealing with the local composite index of ability to pay. Unless the pie gets bigger, we're just changing the size of the slices. And so this particular one attempts to get at the size of the pie. As everyone around this table knows, the state standards, statewide standards of quality are minimal standards, and the state draws its funding to the ability to meet those minimal standards. As everybody around the table also knows, every school division in state exceeds those standards. So the standards are truly artificial and hold down the true cost of public education. So what we're asking for here is a JLRX study of the true cost of public education and how much money the state needs to pony up to provide its share of the cost, of that true cost.
Again, I don't think this was of controversy either. Let's move on.
Okay, the next item was in this, in your package last year, in a little bit different form. We've tweaked it a bit. What is essentially is to provide additional money for CTE, career readiness and work readiness, and to target at the projects that build upon regional needs and successful programs already in place. Then we cite in the support, one example of such, of these types of incentives could be a tax credit for employers who hire high school apprentices.
As we know, this is very big for us. I do like the literal example that we give, and I think this will generate good discussion next week as well. Any other thoughts on this?
The next item is the lottery funds. This was in your package last year. We made progress on this last year. The General Assembly got the restoration of lottery funds back to 35% of the total. This asked to push it this year back to 40%, which is where it was pre-recession.
Got a question. Is this supposed to be 100%?
The best they've done is 40. You're correct.
And they lied right from the start. Okay. Just clarification, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so in addition to these, I don't know, Ron and Mark, if you think that the city draft agenda, or legislative element relative to supporting new avenues for funding public school construction would fit into this category? It should, I would think, right?
Well, it's-
It would be one of the asks as it relates to action items?
Right, because the things that Ron had gone through so far, those items are the prime-
The specific ask.
Yeah. The priorities, and so the question, I think, for the board is, yeah, should it be a priority or should it just be something that the board supports?
Right. So everybody has at their desk, number one, it says, "Support new avenues for funding public school construction and renovation costs, including the creation of a two-year pilot program of competitive brands using funds from the Virginia Public Building Authority to offset new construction or renovation costs for publicly owned and operated K-12 schools."
And you know, it's always good to have comity among the board, the council and the board.
Right.
And so this is the council, it appears to be headed this direction. So certainly, one, having it, yes, I would, we would recommend that. That's good for, on two fronts, on Richmond and here. And it's being a priority that's, I would recommend that's a board decision.
So before we decide whether it's a priority or something we support, this did come up yesterday in our conversation, we were talking about capital costs in addition to the funding formula. So again, this is what was being referenced yesterday when they were speaking of their legislative priorities. So I guess the question before us is, do we believe it is an ask or it is a support effort that would go after the opposed efforts? Thoughts? It does stated the word "support," I would point that out in the first word of the first sentence.
Support seems fine to me. And actually, we could reference the city's priority, so it shows the connection between the two.
Right.
Dr. Robinson?
Is the city, is this an ask for the city?
It's within their priorities. I'm not sure where it stands in that way.
We should follow suit with whatever they do. If they're asking for it, I would say we should ask for it, too.
We have to just Jeff Westdellma on that one.
I would, I would recommend that, as a show of support, a true support.
Pretty sure that most of these are supports, not specific ask, in the big list you've got here.
You think they're supports?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
If it's support, then I would say, let's just support it.
Okay.
And go for our other asks.
Okay. All right, so if otherwise, it's noted differently in the city-ledge package as an ask, we'll just continue as a support and go under our supports.
Under support.
Correct.
Okay.
But I do think this should be a conversation point next week. Typically, we go pretty quickly through the opposed and supports, but in this one, I think we should pull this out, because it's such a big item for us, and for the city, obviously.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ms. Doyle, I had a comment or question on the previous one related to the CTE funding before we go into opposed.
Uh-huh. Sure.
So at the last meeting, I had raised a question whether or not we should, in the description where we are encouraging that regional efforts be incentivized, which is fine, but I raised at the last meeting whether or not we should also, maybe prior to that, include some language that's specific to Norfolk. So obviously, we're supporting the increase and directed to incentivize regional efforts, but I'm also wondering whether or not we should encourage specific support for our Norfolk efforts as well.
I mean, that would be, the language change you could do to accomplish that would be just to incentivize individual city, individual locality, and regional.
Individual city. Individual locality and/or city.
Individual locality and, okay. And I'm sorry, I had that note.
That's okay.
But I didn't understand that to be a change, so I'm sorry.
And I didn't catch it either until reading it again, so it's fine.
Okay, so anything else under the asks before we move on? Was there anything in Ms. Bassin's email that referenced an ask that we needed to say is more federally oriented?
Well, yes, there were a couple of issues. First is on the technology front, the, what you identified was the E-Rate and Connect Ed, which are two federal programs. And so, so anyway, there was that, and then the IDEA issue. Those three are federal, and my thought was that the thing to do there would be, we'd be happy to draft a letter to the congressional delegation on those counts. I would probably not have them in the state requests, because the General Assembly, it's hard enough for them to care about the things they have to care about.
And the process would be, we would draft a letter for the chairman to send on behalf of the entire board, expressing support, and asking the congressional delegation to support those.
Okay. But though, I guess the one ask that, one or two asks that I'm still stuck on that I would like us to discuss is making the diverse schools an ask versus a support. And so that's something I feel, I'm probably not the only one, I know I'm not the only one that feels strongly about that, but I feel strongly about that as an ask.
Do you want to address that now? Do you want to come back afterward?
No, let's address that now, so that we're in the right category.
Okay, I wasn't sure when to, but it seemed like this was a good time.
That's on page five of the red line draft, the diverse schools is, so it was, after the last meeting, it was still a support, and so now the question is whether it should be moved as a priority.
Yes, I think it should be moved as a priority.
I mean, I concur. I just think that, I mean, all that we've been focused on our tagline is being that cornerstone. We know our data shows the positive impact of diverse environments for our children. I think it aligns with the workforce skills that industry says is important, and so I would agree with Ms. Bassin in terms of it being it.
I would also.
I have no problem. Raise, stand up to an ask.
Okay. Ms. Bassin, did you have another one you wanted to move?
Well, under that, you know, language, you know, along those same lines, language in the VPI, so that was the only other piece, is that we have certain stipulations of what other groups might constitute, but I think, as Dr. Gabriel has advocated for, too, over the years, that, you know, anywhere we're asking to incentivize mixed-income school programs, which doesn't just, isn't just limited to pre-K, but it should be pre-K-12. So I would think that that, my common language, should be threaded through those two items.
So where is it on here that you'd like to see that?
Under the VPI.
Which is the first one on the first page.
Which is the first one on the first page, and then making the diverse schools at priority. Yep. So under the VPI section, which paragraph, is there, I'm sorry, where do you want to add the language that you had just spoke about?
Now, offer a potential.
Yes.
Because to me, I don't know to what extent the Virginia, how prescriptive the Virginia preschool initiative is, but since we just moved the item around diverse schools as an ask, we could add language in that block that identifies from-
Say, pre-K through 12.
Through 12.
Yeah. And that would satisfy that, yeah.
Is that what covered?
That's a good idea.
So where you get the big bucks, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
All right, anybody else felt like anything should be added to the asks or moved to the asks? Okay, let's move on to the opposed.
Want to start with the support? Oh, sorry, I was on the wrong page. Jump ahead.
So it's, this is, you know, to, don't put unfunded mandates on school boards.
Right. Yeah, I don't think we had a problem with local autonomy or non-public school VHSL activity, or charter, or virtual.
Right, and virtual's the same. And then after the last meeting, on the student discipline, I tried to incorporate language that came out of that discussion, which had to do that Norfolk has, you would all have worked hard and spent money to do the alternative education program, and so that a one-size-fits-all state policy on what you have to do on student discipline would be inappropriate, where if that one size is meant to fit school divisions that have done nothing, that it would, it could end up really being a problem for you, and I, so anyway, that's what the language is intended to do. But I don't have any copyright on it, so if there are any edits, changes, or whatever.
Dr. Boone, are you comfortable with the way this is written?
I am.
Okay.
I've got one question for Dr. Boone. So as we, we know that we're dealing with, we know what we're opposing. My question is, the language right now doesn't really acknowledge anything around disparities, which we know is out there, and I think that's part of what's really driving a lot of this. Should we have something that, even as we mentioned that Norfolk has developed an alternative education program, should we have some language in here that we are acknowledging that there are disparities out there, or some language that specifically suggests that, we say increased funding for alternative education programs, but do we want to put some language in there that rewards or encourages funding for divisions like Norfolk that have stepped out there in order to provide the types of work that we're doing? I mean, it's on the opposition side, because we are opposing the state trying to dictate, but is there some affirmative language that we could also be considering that speaks to it in a different tone versus just in opposition to?
That last sentence, I think, approaches what you were saying.
Okay.
Instead, the state should provide increased funding for alternative education programs to help divisions remove disruptive students from the classroom. I don't like disruptive students.
Yeah, I don't like, well, that's what I was going to ask you.
I don't like disruptive students.
Right.
From the classroom, and place them in an educational environment better suited to their educational and behavioral needs.
I would just take that part out.
Just take disruptive out.
Yeah, that, yeah, to help divisions place students in an educational environment, better suited, yeah.
Well, just say, in an environment, yeah, educational environment, better suited to their academic and behavioral needs.
So if I understand, because this thing about the remove students from the classroom, and actually, maybe a better way to say it, to place those, place students.
Well, increased funding for students, programs to help divisions support students who violate the code of student conduct, that gets too big.
Yeah. We could say, better suited to meet their academic and socio-emotional, or that, that's, might be too edgy speak.
I think academic and behavioral needs.
Yeah.
Because disruptive students aren't the only ones that wind up in alternative.
Right, right.
So that's why I say, remove students from the classroom. I just think we just take disruptive out.
Okay. And then otherwise, it's satisfactory in from your perspective?
Along what Mr. Jordan was saying, if you wanted to add something like Norfolk proactively has taken into consideration the disparities, is that, because you wanted to put a little something like that in there to say that we recognize the disparities, which is-
We do, but I guess, one person's assumption on that, that might have been driving some of the bill, but some of the other bill wasn't even about disparities. It really was about, what do you do with Melinda when she's constantly and chronically disruptive, and we're told we can't do anything with her?
Yeah.
So, yes, it was, I don't think most of them address disparities. Now, some of the times, the idea, you know, well, we limit what local boards can do in the hope of addressing disparities, but it doesn't.
Well, maybe then it's-
From experience in another state, when you did that, it didn't necessarily stop disparity.
But maybe it's not a language that needs to be in here, but I think in our conversation, our advocacy.
Right.
I think it's important that we are acknowledging that there's, the data are what the data are, and that we are being proactive.
Yeah.
And we're not shying away from the issue, and be clear that as part of our own accountability system, we are looking at it, but it goes back to what was said earlier. The data in the reports aren't just that so-called disruptive students are finding themselves expelled, there are other factors that are often showing up that can just be about perceptions.
Right.
And cultural differences that also is showing that students are finding themselves in that circumstance, and I was just trying to find ways for us to acknowledge that we recognize that and that we are trying to do something about it, and to the extent that the state can support divisions that are trying to be proactive and dealing with it, please do. You don't have to punish everything, you can reward people who are doing positive things.
Then, then an additional sentence, something that says, "We also support the state's efforts to reduce disparity in disciplinary practices for students."
That could be it, something to that effect.
Well, and that could trigger the conversation point as well. So I think it's a good idea to add a sentence, so that we acknowledge what we want to address.
And, but we put it back on the state.
Exactly.
We say, yeah, you all started this.
Right.
And so we also support efforts.
Yeah.
To reduce disparity.
Okay.
In terms of students.
Mark, did you capture that?
Yes.
The other thing we need to clarify is that the alternative programs in Norfolk are funded with local dollars, not state dollars.
Yeah, and that's what I was, wasn't, because we're-
At Ms. Ingram, our alternative programs funded with local estate dollars.
Um, little bit of Bo.
Okay.
So we said to you-
We'll try to strengthen that to make the point that the state's not putting enough in, as well as, is the reason they need to add more.
She'll provide increased funding, so, yeah, so we're a combination.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else under the opposes, before we move on? All right, supports.
Okay, the supports, is support to provide funding for, improve the performance of schools in challenging environments. And then we provide the basket full of examples, some of which we've touched on in, specifically in the ask category, that are needed in the toolbox to make a school successful. It's not intended to be a complete list, but it's certainly pretty illustrative.
The, the only, I'm fine with, I'm sorry, I didn't ask to be recognized.
Go, you're fine. So just go ahead.
I'm, I'm fine with that. I just want to see if we can say schools and districts, because too often, the money comes specifically for schools, or specific to schools, and you know, as we're trying in Norfolk, we're doing a district, improve turnaround model, and so we would need some flexibility there.
I like that.
You're saying in the title, schools and districts in challenging environments?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah.
Okay, LCI?
Yeah, this one's a little bit of a tweak of the one that's been in there before. The LCI should be reviewed to identify demands on locals' revenue for, for those divisions that serve a high percentage of at-risk children. And then it says, it goes on in the explanation, that this review should be conducted as part of the larger study that we asked for earlier on funding, total funding of true cost of public education.
Good. Very adequate instructional staff. I think we were fine with adequate instructional staff, we were fine with flexibility, we were fine with SOL, we were good with school calendar. I think, Ms. Bassin, the one thing we did do was remove gifted, because I think you agreed that if all else were taken care of through the other priorities of act, oppose, or support, this by default would be successful.
Correct.
Or achieved.
Correct.
Okay, so you're comfortable that's still?
Yes.
Okay. So we deleted the gifted, and then diverse, we were going to move that to the asks, and then add language as it relates to the VPI slash K-12.
Yeah.
Right. Pre-K-12.
Sorry?
Pre-K-12.
Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay.
I just, I have one. Is there another word other than adequate instructional staff? Like, should we be saying high, highly qualified and effective instructional staff? Or do we, you know, adequate just sounds like, okay?
Deprolative.
I would take us back to, well, two things. One, who defines adequate?
Yeah.
And that leads into the second piece, our challenges on how do we define the effective?
Right.
And I think if we don't have tools for either one of those, again, think about the audience on this. Legislators understand adequate and inadequate, and that might be the better language for them, but I agree. I think when we do the highly qualified, highly effective, that's some-
Yeah.
And in my read, when I read the adequate, I'm thinking qualitative, quantitative, not qualitative, and that also, it has both, it could be taken both ways, but when we wrote this, I was thinking quantitative.
But, but you could, if I could say, you could just strike the word adequate and let the rest of that whole section take care of it.
Okay.
And then avoid that, miss that interpretation.
That would suffice, yeah.
Any other thoughts on these in total? Okay, so how about if we do this, where Adanas will update the red line version of today, and then we will have that in preparation for the meeting legislative breakfast next Wednesday, October 11th, and that will be to us in advance for then, Ms. Banks, to be able to have that in the packet, so we can talk timing of that logistically off-camera here. And then, the other thing we need to address is the actual kind of agenda that we want to have for next week, and then those who have RSVP'd. I know you sent, Ms. Banks, a list of folks that have said yes so far, and I know that we will have more between now and Friday, and certainly between now and next Wednesday. So if you could just send that list out to everybody again, so we're aware and that we'll know who's attending. And then, Dr. Boone, do you want to talk now, maybe, about how we want this meeting to roll in terms of the fact that last year, I do recall, you gave a presentation kind of upfront, which kind of set a very nice stage of the day?
So before you all go there, what I like to do is get a motion, so we can approve-
Do that now?
Yeah, go ahead and approve what we have, and then they, they can, they like to sit around, they can, but you don't have to necessarily get into that sausage-making, but I do think, since we have, I think, had a pretty good discussion, seem to be comfortable with it. I don't want to lose sight of the vote.
Okay.
So, Dr. Robinson?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the legislative priorities as presented.
With the, as modified.
As modified.
Okay. I have a second.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? Here, Ms. Banks, if you call the role, please.
Yes, Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Reverend Haywood?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye. Okay.
So I guess before we move on to logistics, thank you both very much, because that was really great.
We're going to sit and hear the discussion on the meeting.
And you're still welcome, if you hear us discussing something that you think is important for us to consider, you know, feel free to chime in.
To the question, I think last year's format was effective for us, and I would suggest doing a similar format, that I can talk a little bit about the context of Norfolk public schools and where we are and what our progress looks like.
Right.
And then I think, then turn it over to the board to share the legislative priorities. And that way, too, I can slip out to where I need to go, I will be there as long as I can. But I think, you know, that really worked. I am concerned, though, with the slow response rate, that, you know, to that. And I think we need to watch closely or do follow-up calls, because I don't know how effective we would be with a room full of everybody and only a couple of legislators. So, something to think about.
To that point, I think I agree, there should probably be some phone calls. So if we can talk about who might do that outreach. And then secondly, those who weren't able to attend last year, Adana Strategies and myself, and now this year, Dr. Gabriel, can go out and meet with those legislators that weren't able to come. So we did a one-on-one, which frankly was very effective and provided an opportunity for discussion beyond this as well. And it was a good way to establish relationships. And then to hear a little bit more informally what they thought the General Assembly would be saying. So I think we would still do that for those that weren't able to attend, but I do think an outreach now would be necessary.
And we can tie it into November's Take Your Legislature to School.
Exactly.
As well.
Right.
But I just, like you said, it's, it would be a big room with only a couple of folks. So we do have to pay attention to that to see about the effectiveness of that.
I think at some point you all will have to make a call. I mean, obviously, I think we should be reaching out and trying to make sure that everyone is aware of it. I think I got an invitation in the mail, but making the phone calls and seeing where we are in terms of attendance. And then hopefully, we'll proceed as needed.
I think we proceed, I think we'll get people there. So, Ms. Banks, if you could just share with us later today or tomorrow what the attendance looks like so that we know who needs to be called? Okay. All right. Anything else on this before we go?
Will our student rep be able to attend that meeting? I know that's a school day for him, but-
I think we need to be judicious in the amount of instructional time we burden we place, particularly with seniors, because I think he's going to participate. I'm looking back at Janelle in the VSBA conference in November. And we're just coming into the close of the first nine weeks.
You know, maybe as part of the presentation, maybe we can get a video from him if you wanted him to share, share with the, at the breakfast, so maybe we'll do something like that.
Yeah, we could even show the video of him when he spoke here from the dais, which I thought was very appropriate. Yeah, so we don't need to have him film something new, we can just speak to that. Okay, anything else on the legislative priorities? Okay, thanks. I'll walk Adanas out and Janelle, maybe we can just chat about timing of when we need that before Wednesday for the packet.
All right, so we're going to go ahead. Next thing I have under matters of the board, there's a draft listing of our advisory committee membership. You all know that we have worked for some time trying to make sure that we are promoting opportunities for citizens to serve on various committees, as well as trying to stay on top of how the committees are functioning, how we work with them to get replacements and so forth. So I don't want to go through in particular right now in terms of the draft membership, but what I would like to get the board's support and feedback. You know, when we worked on updating the policy and regulations associated with advisory committees, you all may remember, we worked on some timeframes where we were trying to get applications or recommendations in in a March-April timeframe. And then we would try to vote on the membership in time to have them active come the start of the school year. I'd like to get the board's thoughts on sending to the policy committee a recommendation that they take another look at that and perhaps remove the language that splits placements or approvals of members to our advisory committees, move it away from a timeframe. So basically, the board would have flexibility to do it any time of the year. You know, rather than trying to put it in a certain window. We know that oftentimes, whether it's because of military deployments or lack of interest or somebody changes their minds, we find vacancies. And rather than trying to wait to fill those vacancies in a particular timeframe to just give the board flexibility that if there are vacancies or if we still have positions that we want to fill, that we can constantly have our advertising out there for individuals to participate. And at any point in time that the board felt it was appropriate for us to take action, that we can do that rather than having it restricted to a two or three-month window of time in the spring. So I just wanted to get some thoughts on us asking the policy committee to take a look at that. How you feel about it? Ms. Bassin?
I mean, I support that, because I think as we're reconstituting to some of the, you know, like the CAC and the GAC, I do think it's important to right now be flexible with the application process and then, you know, revisit, revisit that. Because we do get members that come in at different points of the year for the reasons that you stated, whether it's a recent move and wanting to be involved in the school division or, you know, also, I think we're building trust, too. So I think that's also something that we have to consider and work with the community on.
I would support allowing the policy committee to take a look at that also. When they're looking at that policy, I know we discussed this in the past, criteria for removal or asking a member to step down or if a member is unable to fulfill the meeting requirements or has a conflict of interest, is that, is that going to be discussed also? Or do we already have language sufficient for that in the policy? Because I don't think we do.
Well, there's language there and they also have bylaws. But if, you know, if they need to take an opportunity to revisit that as well, I don't think it would be that complicated.
I would ask that they look at that as well.
Dr. Robinson?
My only thought is that any time that you change a policy to make it more flexible, there can be unintended consequences. So I'd send a message to the, to the policy committee to try to ferret out any unintended consequences by changing that policy.
Yeah, and it's really on the regulation side. The policy is pretty straightforward. We probably put a lot into the regulation, because if you remember, we actually, I think, had the actual application in the regulation and some of these dates in the regulations. So I think the policy is still pretty solid, but they can take a look at it. But it's more so working with the administration to take a look at it on the regulation side.
If that's the case, then is it any, is that even under our purview, since it is a regulation?
Well, what we, and I think that's what we need to clean up, because what we put in there had this window of when we would act. And that's what I'm trying to get the committee to look at.
I understand your motives behind it.
Right. Other than that, but on that point, you know, we did have a, the current chair of the CAC resigned. I am the liaison this year to the CAC. So I think there's going to be some continuing work with rebuilding and supporting the CAC moving forward. And had some conversations with Dr. Boone on that. And so we'll be following her lead and the lead of the consultants to work with that. But I just want to make sure the board is aware that as far as the CAC is concerned, it's a couple of things that we're going to have to take action on. And one is coming back with some additional recommendations soon to make sure that we have majority parents on the CAC, that is required. So I'd just like to encourage board members to continue to reach out to parents that we think may have interest in serving on CAC or any of our committees. There is a form that Ms. Banks has, I think it's also available on the website, that we can point individuals to so they can complete an application. But just want to make sure you are aware of those circumstances with the Special Education Advisory Committee. And it's important that we have that committee and that they function, because they help to review our annual plan and provide recommendations to the board. So just look for some ongoing work with that in the coming weeks. Anything anyone else have on advisory committees before I open up any other matters of the board that anybody wanted to bring forward? So that's it for advisory committees, any other items right now? If you remember, the last workshop we went through and kind of went around and talked about some priorities and goals, so Mrs. Banks is working on pulling those together. And we'll have those out for us to consider as we move forward. But as of this point, is anything else in terms of today's work session that anyone would like to bring forward? We are going to have agenda planning tomorrow. And so I just opened the floor for that right now.
I just have two things that I would like to maybe get a little more information on. We've been discussing for a while overage for grade. And just wondering where we were, where we are with that in terms of data, programming, what are we doing in terms of servicing those kids and where are we with that? The other piece is, and I don't know if this is, along with that, I know we've been talking about CTE. And I was just wondering if there can be a discussion about vocational programs that we can gear towards that population, overage for grade, as an incentive or something that will encourage them to want to be a part of the academic piece? So if that's something we can look into. The other thing is that we had a great discussion last, well, week before last on wraparound programs in terms of an introduction as to what it was. But I would like to know that, since we've been discussing it for a while, who are our partners within the community other than military? Do we have MOUs with those individuals, working with the wraparound services? Have we really begun implementing those within the schools and with student support services in terms of the long-term suspensions or even short-term suspensions? What are we doing to merge those two programs together and how are we working that?
Got that noted. And we will talk about those tomorrow, as well as whether or not some of those may end up as briefs to the board or whether or not as our regular work session agenda is just something that we will filter in, an ongoing agenda. Anyone else? All right. Hearing none, then, we will move on to the next agenda item, which would be academic affairs. Dr. Boone?
Thank you. Dr. Rogers is coming forward. We're going to provide this afternoon an accreditation update based on state board action this week, last week, Wednesday, lose track of the day, last Thursday. And to tell you what's also in the hopper for state board consideration for next month. So, Dr. Rogers?
Good afternoon, Chairman Jordan, school board members, and Dr. Boone. As Dr. Boone just shared, I will give you a very brief overview of where we are with our school accreditation status. If you remember, just a few weeks, a couple of weeks ago, September 13th, I provided a pretty detailed overview with regards to where we were with our school accreditation. So as we celebrate the fact that we have improved the percentage of our schools being accredited from 49% to 61%, the purpose of our time today is to talk about where we are with those schools that were identified as TBD, those six schools. So some background information to paint context for your organizational thinking. Accreditation announcements from the state come in three big areas. Mid-September, we get the information for those schools who are accredited and the schools who are identified as TBD. As Dr. Boone shared last week, the state board did make a, well, it was recommended and they voted upon schools who didn't quite meet accreditation. However, they did meet what's referred to as a rubric for being qualified to be identified as partially accredited, reconstituted. And then the third piece of information that we'll get from the state with regards to accreditation are those schools who will appeal the decision that was made for partial accreditation, reconstituted. And we did submit application for that. So I am happy to say that Northside Middle School met the qualifications as outlined in the rubric for being partially accredited, reconstituted, based on a rubric that was provided from the state. And they made it because they had a four-point gain in English performance from the previous year, 2015, 16, as you can see in the slide in front of you. They are at 72% in English reading in combination of writing. So we are proud of the efforts that they have made there, as well as the staff at CAP who have worked with them. As you can see, last year, they were in their third year being warned. So this year, they did face denial if they had not made it. However, because of the progress that they've made in English and the rubric that was set forth, they were able to meet that standard. And just to review the rubric requirement, excuse me, the accreditation metrics that are used currently are a little different than they were used in 2014 and 15. There's either fully accredited, partially accredited. And there are four areas with which schools can be partially accredited. As was shared, Northside Middle School did meet partial accreditation, reconstituted because of their improvements in English. And then, of course, there's accreditation denied. And if you remember, we did talk about those accreditation standards being up for change in the next couple of years. So we'll monitor that closely and provide you with updates. The slide that you have in front of you is a piece of the rubric that is presented to us from the Virginia Department of Education. And it demonstrates the manner in which Northside Middle School did meet the rubric to allow them to be partially accredited, reconstituted. If you'll see, last year, they were at 68% passing in English. And this year, they are at 72, which according to the rubric, they met that benchmark by having four-point, a four-point gain in English reading, which meant that they automatically qualified for partial accreditation, reconstitution. The other way in which schools could have met that was to have data for a new principal with a proven track record of success in a similar school, which is the third piece of our being able to submit an appeal for the accreditation of, well, the status of partial accreditation, reconstituted. We were able to appeal it based on two things. One, a demonstration of improvement, academic improvement in multiple areas. Or having a demonstrated principal who has a proven track record in Virginia of success in a similar school with which they are currently the principal of. And what we decided to do was to take a look at all of our data. Last year, we did have 22 schools that were denied. And we looked at their performance and decided to submit applications of appeal for five of our elementary schools. And those five schools were Southside Sem Academy, Chesterfield Academy, James Monroe Elementary School, Norview Elementary School, and St. Helena Elementary Schools. And we are awaiting a second reading of the applications for those appeals. And the state board will make those decisions later on this month. So that will be the third iteration of the school accreditation status that we will look for. And I just wanted to share, oh, can you help me out? I just wanted to share some of the rationale behind the appeals process from the district perspective. Each of those schools did demonstrate some, either some level of improvement academically or we did an adjustment in their school leadership, as we have been discussing now for a couple of months. But MPS has shown a systemic process in reducing the number of non-accredited schools, as evidenced by the data points that are shown below. In 2015, 16, we had 61% of our schools that were identified as non-accredited. Currently, for the 2017, '18 school year, 38% of our schools have been identified as non-accredited. So that is something that we felt strongly about using as a means of justification for the appeals process. And then lastly, during the 2016, '17 school year, we had 46% or six out of 13 schools that were identified as third-year warrant schools exit that status and become fully accredited. 100% of those schools that exited that status remained fully accredited. 100% of those schools that exited that status remained fully accredited. So, that demonstrates our ability to sustain the model of school improvement. So, we felt again strongly that those five schools demonstrated progress in moving toward the right direction for accreditation. There we go. All right, so those are the five schools. And again, the rationale behind our submission of the appeals application are either district-wide school improvement, the school governance change, and the trajectory of improved academic performance of those five schools. So, hopefully, we'll have good news in the next couple of weeks for those schools that we submitted applications for.
There was a first reading for the appeals applications during the board, state board's meeting last week. And so, they will take action at their meeting in the latter part of October. So, we look forward to being able to share some more good news, we hope.
Questions, comments? Just, Ms. Basine and I had the opportunity to attend part of the city council's retreat, and they're having conversations about schools. And one of the things that came up was dealing with the impact of accreditation status on students who are graduating high school. Can you just kind of clarify and remind us again of what this accreditation status that we have now, how it's intended to help us see where the status of students are, but it doesn't have, or what impact, if any, it has on a student who is applying to college or going into the workforce in terms of accreditation status of their, of their high school?
Of course. From my previous experience and what, I did a little bit of research on this prior to coming to Norfolk Public Schools. When colleges look at student applications to come to the university, and I'll use Virginia Tech for an example, my alma mater, they look at the school's profile so that they're able to compare apples to apples. So, for example, if you attended a school in Norfolk and your grade, your grade scale is a little different, you're on a 10-point grading scale, and I come from a surrounding school district, and I'm at an eight-point grading scale, and I have weighted courses, advanced placement courses, or more than you do. And they look at the aggregate to determine how they can equitably accept students. So, in other words, a number 10 in a class in Norfolk Public Schools could be a number 45 in a class at another school district. So, the measurement of accreditation is relative, I think, in terms of college acceptance.
I mean, I'm not aware of any colleges.
That said, you're not coming from.
I just wanted to.
Well, and the other thing too that I've seen, and as we've talked to college entrance personnel, is that they look primarily at the strength of the courses that students have taken.
Correct.
Because even with weighting and whatever the transcript says, they then recalculate GPAs based on the standard they have applied to them. And they pretty much look at the rigor and the types of courses that students have taken. And with that in place, then, they see whether or not it's a student that would meet their institution's level of potential success.
Correct.
Yeah, I just think it's important that we are, continue to communicate that because often, there's a lot of confusion in the community about what that means or because they think of, you know, colleges being accredited or things of that type, which is very different from what we're dealing with.
Well, and our school councils play a lot in how that's decided. So, for example, students, you know, more often than not, think that if they've met the requirement for math prior to 12th grade, their senior year, and I'm done with the math, I don't need to take any. Colleges do look to see whether students take math as a senior to continue that rigor.
Right. And the other piece that schools look very clearly with too would be any, even though many schools are moving away from standardized tests, ACT, SAT, they still look to see that. They, they look at the advanced placement load. And the other accreditation piece that we're seeing shifts in nationally are regional accrediting bodies. Used to be SACS, it's now called Advanced Ed in Virginia, and, well, in this region. And because most states now have their own accountability system, the question has been, are there redundancies between those regional accrediting bodies and states accreditation rating? And so, most colleges have to have that level of accreditation in order to access grants, financial aid, research dollars, and all of that. And so, the public schools, K-12, high schools, find themselves in a very different place. So, we're beginning to see shifts in all of that going forward. But again, the student's transcript is what carries the day for the student, the strength of the types of courses that they've taken and their success in those courses.
Ms. Wagner?
Yeah, I think I asked a question early on, and in terms of how we weight AP courses as opposed to the students who are taking courses that are actually college courses?
The difference between the weighting in AP and the dual enrollment, yes, that's, that's in our course selection guide as well as trying to think, is it policy, maybe district policy, but we do have that identified for students. We can provide the board a copy of that.
Okay, because I'd like to see that now.
All right, anything else in board? Anything else for academic affairs?
That's our great news for today.
All right, all right, thank you, sir. Okay, and then the rest of the bulk of the meeting will be in the hands of the policy committee. So, Ms. Basine, Reverend Haywood, Dr. Burson, Dr. Boone, you ready for them?
We're ready to support.
Okay, all right. Okay, welcome to the podium.
All right. All right, fellow board, boardmates, and Dr. Boone. As you, as you can see, you see a long list of policies before you, but most of those are largely revisions based on amendments to the Virginia Code, updates to the legal references, and there are some clarifications to the, to the code that are reflected in the revisions of the policies. One I would like to direct your attention to is policy JHH and JHHR, which is the suicide prevention policy. The policy reflects, just to remind you all, the policy reflects the recs from the School Health Advisory Council as well as public comment. It also addresses some of the questions that have been raised, that were raised at the July work session that we had. So, if you all have any questions or concerns about the current draft, we're open to those questions, or if you're okay with the current draft as written.
And just to update the board, Attorney Cloud, who I know had worked with you all on that, he called, he had an emergency in the family, and that's why he's not with us today. But if we do have any additional legal questions on these other policies, he said he would, you know, follow up with us with the first opportunity that he gets. So, I just wanted to make that note.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Are you, are you all comfortable with what's in there? Okay. And I also want to clarify, you'll see that the, the policy committee decided or based on the feedback that we received from the administration, and you all have put, streamlined the policy, and they're in the process of developing regulations that will really get into the how the policy will be enforced and carried out. So, policy regulations are in draft form right now, and they're up there for you to review at this time if you want to see where, what we've moved out of the current draft of the policy and where we've put it in the regulation. Okay, so, that is it for policy review. And if, what's that?
For all of it?
For all of it, yes. So, largely, like I said, the other ones are mainly, you know, updates to, based on.
Just checking, so does anybody have any questions at all on?
Yes, or are there, and I've noted the policy questions that you had earlier on the advisory councils. But if there are other policy questions for other policies that you would like for us to look at and review, you could let us know that at this time, too.
Dr. Gabriel?
Sure. When we were, not in the discussion of the board priorities, but in advance of that, I had sent out some information to the board about a possible policy for you all to consider if the, I guess, if the board was comfortable with them considering. I don't know if we can directly ask them to consider it or if it has to be something that the board is, has consensus regarding. But it's on the purchasing ability of our schools and the division. And the background information that I provided was that there are a lot of electronic ways that might be more efficient, I'm not sure. And are our policies up to date with the, and do they allow the schools the flexibility in order to make purchases that they can use for their school? And then, do they get the credit for that? So, for example, there are a couple of entities that the schools have to buy books and supplies and things from. Is that currently the most?
So, let me jumpstart your question. Somebody's asked you about when we would, schools have access to Amazon purchasing again. So, let me just jumpstart right to that question and put the elephant in the room. We certainly.
Just, can you explain to the, for the rest of us?
It's not just Amazon though, but it's, it's the warehouses also.
So, let me back up. We have purchasing policies, and I'll ask Ms. Ingram, she can help support me on this. We have purchasing policies and guidelines for all departments and schools to utilize in terms of shopping. They are done both for their state requirements in terms of procurement dollars and what we can and can't exceed. There are limits that individuals have. Most of those limits are set by local districts. There are some state requirements for, like as a superintendent or something, you all can determine what, what the limits are. And so, around those purchasing requirements, there are also the standards in terms of entities that will abide by the tax-exempt status, entities that in terms of how purchases make. Because you know, we do have a purchasing card that allows departments and principals to purchase certain supplies and things from, from their budgets, but within these purchasing requirements. And so, when we, there's a threshold overall that we approach with individual vendors that could run up, put us in jeopardy with procurement laws. For example, if the, if $50,000 is the max that we can do before we have to put it out to bid, then we have to look at what have our purchases been across the, the spectrum and across all schools and departments to see if we are approaching or exceeding that threshold. And so, when it came to Amazon, when we looked overall, even though it's quick delivery, it, the prices are good, we have to stay within those purchasing thresholds. Ms. Ingram and her team in purchasing have been researching to make sure that we are not violating any statutes or codes as it relates to the competitive requirement for certain goods and services. Now, one of the ways we look at that is, one is the total dollars for an entity. But the other way is, what are we purchasing from that? Does, does what we're purchasing approach that threshold? So, we get to slice it and dice it a couple of different ways.
So, I guess then, are the procurement laws then up to date? Which wouldn't have anything to do with our board, but are the procurement laws up to date with the various new ways that different organizations can purchase things and save money and get them faster?
The threshold for the procurement is, is set by, by state code or legislative action. And so, if you're asking then, is that something we should revisit with, with VDOE and others to see what that looks like? We can certainly ask the question. And I'll ask Ms. Ingram if there's anything else she wants to add to clarify my botched up explanation.
You did a good job, but one of the other things with Amazon is trying to get your arms around what they can and cannot buy. Because you can go on Amazon and buy anything you want to, whether it's school-related or not. It doesn't have to be shipped to the school, it can be shipped to someone's home. So, we have to get our arms around whatever the schools are purchasing to ensure that they are supplies for the schools and the schools receive them. So, purchasing is working to bring some structure to that piece.
So, you don't, do you think that there is any policy that needs to be updated, reviewed, or discussed in order to have it be the most efficient for our schools and for us to save money for, for the individual schools? Do you see that as a need?
Not at this time. Once we can bring some structure to that piece and other of the warehousing, I think then possibly to update the policies. But right now, until we can bring that structure, there's not just Amazon. There are other warehouses online.
Right.
And because oftentimes, we just had a workshop on that the other day, yesterday, actually. We covered that part of it in that you can buy on Amazon. Sometimes, it may not necessarily come from the Amazon warehouse, but you're buying from some other entity. And then, when they charge you taxes, it's hard to get that refunded. Or if you have to return an item, it's very hard to return the item because you're dealing with other parties, not just Amazon. So, until we can work out all of those kinks in, in making the purchase to make it more effective and efficient for the schools, we're trying to just say Amazon is off the table.
Ms. Ingram, how are the, those types of purchases audited? How do we audit that?
That's, that's the other piece we have to audit as well, is to make sure. I think you, we can go in and actually tell it what type of commodity you can purchase. But until purchasing have an opportunity to really tie it down to ensure that what we are purchasing is really for educational purposes and that it's going to be getting into the hands of the school district, then we, we have to say no until we can do that piece.
And Dr. Robinson?
Just for historical perspective, if you remember, a few years ago, we had some questions about the way items were purchased through the schools, and, and that's why this was consolidated in this effort. So, I'd be very hesitant to change that policy for expediency because the, the possibility for waste, fraud, and abuse goes up tremendously.
What it sounds like is it's an issue that the administration is reviewing. And so, as they continue to move forward, then we can get, get updates accordingly.
We, we certainly will. And our goal is not to tie the hands of principals and departments. But at the end of the day, if we aren't doing what we need to do in terms of policies and requirements and, and meeting expectations, then that's an ugly headline. Norfolk Public Schools pays $14,250 in taxes for items that shouldn't have been taxed. And so, we, we've got to drill in. Yes, it's unfortunate right now, they may have to spend a little more money for something, for an entity that's already approved. But, you know, the devil's in the process, and, and we're undertaking the process around this whole piece with warehousing, online warehousing.
Well, I appreciate that because certainly, I, I want to make sure that everyone's following the laws and the tax codes and procurement and, and that the vendors that we are working with, I know that we do get some type of a benefit from that. So, I appreciate the discussion that we've just had.
And we will provide an update once we've resolved. But as Ms. Ingram was just sharing, her team did a boot camp for a lot of the academic affairs departments and, and other support HR and wraparound service interagency collaboration to again, refresh us on where we are with purchasing, with, with the expectations around management of grants and all of that. So, we aren't just waiting to be reactive, we are really being proactive in terms of making sure that we're staying ahead of what's expected in our, our management of our finances.
How's it feel to be standing up there for 20 minutes?
It's okay.
It's okay.
We should stand periodically, actually.
Yeah, I agree, yes. Anything else for policy committee? So, just as a reminder, so these items will end up on our consent agenda at the next business meeting unless someone has objection or like for it to be. at the next business meeting unless someone has objection or like for it to be considered separately by the time we get to that meeting. All right, so that was much more efficient than, than I was anticipating. We can go home early, but I do, before we do that, before we do that, I do want to just take an opportunity again for us to kind of recheck our calendars. So, we know as of right now, we are planning to, we have our legislative breakfast scheduled for next Wednesday at 8 o'clock at Norfolk Technical Center. And then on Friday, the 13th, you know, we have our governance training with the VSPA on that Friday.
Is that at the Town Bank location?
Uh, no, it's, it's going to be at Dominion.
Dominion Enterprises Building, top floor.
Okay.
So, we'll, we'll have information coming out regarding that. And Dr. Boone, can you just refresh us again on the ribbon cutting events coming up that following week?
Yes. Monday, October 16th at 1:00 PM, ribbon cutting for Larchmont Elementary School. And Tuesday, October 17th at 11:00 AM, ribbon cutting for Ocean View Elementary.
The 16th was Larchmont?
Yes, October 16th at 1:00 PM is Larchmont. And Tuesday, October 17th at 11:00 AM is Ocean View. We work with the principals to see which times would work best for them in terms of doing the ribbon cutting during the school day and so.
So, then of course, we, we did have, I thought was a pretty good joint meeting yesterday with the city council dealing with budget and financing and consideration of funding formula. So, we know coming out of that meeting, part of what is being recommended is that the school board and the council work on some resolutions around that. So, we'll be putting those together for, for discussion and revisiting those timelines as well as we move forward. As of right now, the two administrations will be working together. But also, you know, it's, it's a policy-driven activity as well. So, I'd just like to encourage board members to take the time to go back and review what was presented. In one sense, it's hypothetical. So, I think we need to make sure that as it moves from hypothetical to action, that it's something that truly will work for the good of the whole. And, and as was said yesterday, the example we got yesterday was just one possibility of a formula, and we said we would work together towards a Norfolk formula. So, I just wanted to put that out there. Anyone have any thoughts on that? Ms. Doyle?
I had a question, and I think there might be a data point that we should look into as it relates to the discussion on the funding formula and then the DeJohn-Richter work. So, there's discussion about our enrollment figures and the ADM. And I think a good point to make would be, what is the percent of students we are teaching that are eligible to be taught in the Norfolk Public Schools in our city of Norfolk? And what was it 20 years ago? What was it 10 years ago? What is it today? And with a declining population or with an increasing population, whatever it may be, are we still percent-wise educating the same percent of students versus numbers? Because I think percent versus numbers gets a little bit tricky with people. And I think that would be, and I'm quickly going to answer. So, I think that would be helpful on a lot of levels.
Well, I was going to say, Tracy, actually Tracy Richter actually provided that when he did an update, I think it was in June, May, June. Recent, August maybe, when, when he was here and he talked about it. We're still educating about 85, 88% of school-aged children. And that has been stably and pretty consistent over time. So, it has not shifted. Even as the enrollment has shifted in the school district, it's also about the number of, of school-aged children. And we're staying pretty tru, true to that mid-80s, mid to upper 80 level.
So, I think that's a good data point though to just refresh people about. Because I think when they hear declining enrollment, they think we're educating a percent less, which is not the case. So, we are still educating percentage-wise the same.
What the city has.
Exactly. So, again, this kind of came up yesterday with Mr. Schmigle and Dr. Wibley talking about ADM, and then it's coming up with our enrollment of decline, no decline. What is it?
And we'll, certainly we'll mention this to Tracy. We have our next task force meeting.
Okay.
Next week. And so, we'll mention it.
And I think that's just good for the community to know as well.
Yeah, absolutely. Reverend Haywood?
Yes. Mr. Jordan, will Norfolk Public Schools have a representation at the Great City Schools office?
Yeah, I'm planning to attend, and I know there are members of the staff who are, who are attending.
What's the date?
Actually starts next Wednesday, the 18th through the 22nd. But Dr. Rogers and a number of folks from Academic Affairs and, and Dr. Cataldo, several are going. We actually had some folks this week, Dr. Bailey and Mr. Coleman and others are at a magnet school conference in Minnesota right now. You know, again, looking at our, continuing our work of how we strengthen our specialty programs and things we need to do around that. So, we, usually we take a very large contingency to council Great City Schools, but there were several things that were bumping up against that work. And.
Is somebody else? Oh, Ms. Bassin?
Yeah. Another, another data point that I think would be useful for, to, for, for us, our governance team as well as the city to be aware of is the demographic differences between the city and the school division. Because as we talk about what our overarching goal is, when we were talking about, what is, what outcome are we trying to achieve? I think that difference, looking at those differences should be also part of the conversation. And if I'm not mistaken, I think that while the percentage of students that we educate in the public school system in Norfolk has been consistent, I think that it's a little bit lower than what the national average is, which is around nine, like 91%.
For an urban district also?
Well, that's the thing. We'll have to talk about that.
We're in a good place for an urban district, but we might be low overall.
So, that's a question I have, that how do we, how do we stand, you know, statewide and may, or look at it from an urban to urban standpoint? But I, I think regardless, looking at the demographics for the city and looking at it in our school division, I should, think should spur the conversation of how do we get to a truly proudly diverse city? So, and schools as part of that.
If, any, anything else, Ms. Doyle?
I thought we might want to share just our experience this morning.
Sure.
So, this morning, Mr. Jordan and I visited the Economic Development Authority. And they had asked a couple of weeks ago for us to come to just talk about the high points relative to what's happening in Norfolk Public Schools so that they could become more versed in that, so that when they're trying to retain and/or recruit new businesses to the city of Norfolk, they can speak to the great things happening. They expressed great interest in partnering with us here forward on lots of levels. So, I'll be speaking with Bob Garrus, who's the chair of the EDA, moving forward and bringing back thoughts and ideas here. And then we also recommended that we return to their meeting probably in early December so that we could share with them the recommendations coming from educational planning. So, it was really a very positive conversation, and they feel like there's a lot of good news to share regarding Norfolk Public Schools, and they were very happy to hear it and be well-versed in it and literally have a sheet to take away that they can talk to others. So, I will say to Khalil O'Grand, thank you very much for providing that to us today. And we did not do a PowerPoint. It was clearly a conversation. And I think it was a really productive conversation. It was supposedly a 20-minute agenda 45 minutes later. So, all was good. And Dr. Boone, we explained that you weren't able to be there today as you were at a superintendent's meeting for Region 2, so they well-understood why you weren't here. There was a newspaper reporter in the room too, which I thought was very good because I'd like to hear, have them hear all the good news as well. Anything else you might want to add?
No, I just thought it was a very good meeting, and we also invited them to let us know when they have different projects that they would like to come and get on our agenda and share the economic development initiatives in the city. So, we continue to have that open dialogue that, you know, we would, we would welcome that as well. But I thought it was a very good, very good conversation.
And we'll make sure that we give everyone a copy of the one pager that we did, something that you think the board can use.
Yeah, and we.
We'll email you a copy and then get your hard copies.
Yeah, and we also volunteered you all in case if they're doing a recruitment, company recruitment, if they like to have, you know, board members to be there to talk about the schools and the work that we're doing. So.
It's the best part of our job.
Yes, we offered that up as well. Yeah.
So, it was a very productive conversation, if I may add to. So, Mr. Haywood and I actually met along with Dr. Boone and Ms. Ingram with KPMG as a pre-audit committee meeting last week, I believe it was. Time flies. So, yes, it was recently. So, we had a very good meeting with them, and they should be coming back in either December or early January to do their report, which they do at our business meeting in front of the podium. But it was a good start to the audit review. They're actually well underway, I have to say. So, again, just good progress on that front.
All right. Anything else? All right. Here and now, we will consider ourselves adjourned.